Good evening, it's 7:05. We apologize for our tardiness. I would like to call our combined work and regular session for our first summer month of June in order. So would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We do not have any special recognition because the kids are out. Public participation, do we have any, Mrs. Guthrie? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Turner, is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Approval of the minutes, please?
So moved.
Okay, been moved by Ms. Coggan, is there a second to move it forward?
Second.
Second by Mr. Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Superintendent's reports, Dr. Barr?
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
In the financial report, Newton County School Systems East Blast Four Distribution for April was $1,259,200, which is an increase of $89,668 from last month's collection. The average for the first 51 months of East Blast Four collections is $978,427. The Title Ad Valorem collection for April was $126,807. And finally expenditures are within budget at 86.19% expended and 91.67% of the year complete. And the financial statement there is available for your review. That concludes the financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Are there any questions about the financial report? Okay, you can move forward.
I'm doing the superintendent's report. Is that clear?
Well, Mr. Roundtree had to step out for a moment.
Oh, I just noticed he was missing.
Yeah, he had to step out for a moment. Do you have-
You don't want to do the strategic plan report?
Madam Chair, I can do whatever y'all need me to do.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and-
Are there questions about the strategic plan report?
Well, we need to present it, like, do you know any of his highlighted items?
I do not know his highlighted items.
Yes, we have it.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. We always put you on the spot.
That's okay, that's all right. Student achievement and success, number one, between May 24th and 25th, 1,368 students participated in the NCSS commencement ceremonies and earned a record-breaking $50 million in academic, fine arts, community, and athletic scholarships. In high-quality workforce, item three, the upbeat survey for teachers at all schools was conducted in May. The survey was emailed to over 1,200 teachers on May 1st, 2019, and the deadline for completing the survey was May 15, 2019. The district and principals will be provided feedback about their survey results in early June. Climate, culture, and communication, number one, the Newton County School System held its third annual One Newton Parent Engagement Recognition Program on May 16, 2019, at Newton High School. There were 731 parents eligible for recognition this year. The program was a huge success as approximately 300 parents attended the event and were recognized for their outstanding support for the Title One Parent Engagement Program. Parents who attended this event for the second or third time were recognized as our Gold Star Parents. School system personnel thanked parents for supporting the Newton County School System, and that's a major event, and kudos to Dr. Thomas and her team for putting that on. And finally, under organizational and operational effectiveness, number two, Mr. Craver, procurement specialist for the school system, taught a class on best practices in procurement at the Governmental Procurement Association of Georgia Spring Conference on May 8 through 10. Number five, Governor Brian Kemp issued a proclamation declaring May 8, 2019, a school nurse day, to honor the work and contributions of nurses to local school systems and the children under their care. And finally, number six, school system nutrition employees, including managers, assistant managers, and assistants, took the SERVE Safe Course and Exam and flourished with an approximate pass rate of 93%. So we are very proud of them. And that concludes the strategic report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Enrollment report, he's still not back.
Enrollment, sorry, right? Enrollment report, as of May 24, 2018, we had 19,684 students enroll. This year, we have 19,656 students enroll, which is an increase of 28 students. And that concludes the enrollment report.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for a superintendent's report to move it forward, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, is there a second on the floor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any additional questions for Dr. Barr? Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero, thank you, Dr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am.
We have no old business, moving on to new business, Ms. Robinson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. The superintendent recommends the approval of the FY-20 budget for all governmental funds as approved in the tentative budget last month. Attached, you have the final budget and the format required for approval. Background, the budget for board approval consists of all governmental funds, the general fund, state grants, special revenue funds, capital projects funds, debt service funds, school food service funds, school principal accounts, and after-school program. Of all the funds, the general fund is the largest, as it includes all the functions required for normal maintenance and operation of the school system, and it is the budget that is controlled by state QBE funds and local property tax dollars. State grants include special needs pre-K flow-through funds from the FFA camp, lottery pre-K, and professional learning. Special revenue funds are all of the federal grants. Capital projects include designated building programs. Debt service funds are required to pay off debt incurred through our building programs. The school food service fund is a proprietary fund, meaning that it is to generate enough revenue in the program to offset all the costs of the program. The tentative budget approved by the board on May 14, 2019, was advertised in the legal organ, the Covington News, as required by law, on Sunday, May 19, and Sunday, May 26, of 2019. The board may change the tentative budget until such time as it adopts the final budget prior to the adjournment of the June regular meeting. The budget was approved using an estimated digest of $2.772 billion and a milage rate of 20 mils. The final MNO digest has not yet been received from the Tax Commissioner. For the FY-20 general fund budget, we are projecting a beginning fund balance of just over $31 million. Our total revenues are projected to be just over $186 million, which is an increase of 6.01% from the FY-19 budget, due in part to increased state revenue to partially fund salary increases. The total expenditures are projected to be $193 million, which is an increase of 2.94% from the fiscal year 2019 budget, mainly due to a salary increase for all employees and a slight increase in the TRS employer contribution rate. This budget will provide a projected ending fund balance of $24 million in fiscal year 20. We appreciate all the hard work of the board in working through this budget process, taking the time to study the budget, and providing valuable input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. May I have a motion for item A to move it forward?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? No additional discussion, I'll call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
Dr. Barr, you have B through L, however, since this is our work session, we're going to have to do these individually.
I'm happy to take them all together if you're quick, if you like that, though. However you want to work it.
My first time presenting on it, so you got to do it individually. Thank you.
All right. In item B, the superintendent recommends the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance coverage provided by the Safety, National Casualty Corporation. The policy period will be July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020. The total cost of the coverage premium is $146,167. As rationale, the excess workers' compensation insurance is a policy written to indemnify the self-insured employer for workers' compensation claims exceeding a certain dollar amount, in this case, $650,000. Maintaining such a policy is a legal requirement for a self-insured organization. This relates to strategic goal area four, organizational operational effectiveness. The funding source is FY-2020 general funds, various functions as appropriate, object 260. That concludes item B.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion for B, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you. Item C?
In item C, the superintendent recommends the renewal of property and liability insurance coverage provided by the Georgia School Boards Association Risk Management Fund. The effective date will be July 1, 2019, and the expiration date will be June 30, 2020. The total cost of coverage is $694,398. As background, the Georgia School Boards Association Risk Management Fund is a member-owned program and is managed by GSBA professional staff. Unlike commercial insurance company excess funds, any investment income earned on the premium held by GSBA RMF accrues to the benefit of its membership. This item relates to strategic goal area four, organizational operational effectiveness, and the funding source is the FY-2020 general fund, function 2500, 2600, 2700, object 520. That concludes item C.
Thank you, Conley. What is the pleasure of the board? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I'll take Bailey and Turner. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, thank you. Item D?
In item D, the superintendent recommends the approval of membership in the Griffin Regional Educational Service Agency. Total cost of the contract for FY-20 is $193,246.4. Each year, the Board of Education approves a contract and enters into an agreement with Griffin RISA for supplementary services. All school systems are assigned to one of 16 regional educational service agencies. A description and explanation of fees is provided for your review. This relates to all strategic goal areas one through four, and the funding source is FY-2020 general funds, function 2900, object 810. That concludes item D.
May I have a motion for D, please?
So moved.
Okay, Coggan, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey, any discussion or questions?
I had a question about the price increase.
Okay.
I couldn't find what the reason for the increase was in the data.
I believe it was in salaries and benefits, if I'm not mistaken, and it was primarily in repair services and orientation specialist services, but I think it was salary-related.
Repair services and orientation of immobility specialist services, but it went up.
Yeah.
Right.
So those would be because of-
Salary and benefits for those positions that Griffin RISA pays them to provide services to us. Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. E?
In item E, the superintendent recommends the renewal of membership in the Georgia School Boards Association. The term will be July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020. The total cost is $25,325. This relates to strategic goal area four, and the funding source is the FY-2020 general fund, function 2300, object 10. That is item E, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for E?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and second, any discussion? Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. F?
In item F, the superintendent recommends the contract for site work for the replacement Eastside High School be awarded to McElroy Incorporated of Zebulon, Georgia. The contract value is $5,387,284. As a background, invitation for bids, C91210, a solicitation for a contractor for this site work, was opened on June 6, 2019. The project consists of clearing trees and debris, grading for the future school facility, and the installation of a stormwater drainage system. The bids were evaluated on the contractor's lump sum bid for the entire project. The responses to the invitation for bid are included for your review. This relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding source is the FY-2020 capital funds, as approved by the board. That concludes item F.
Okay, may I have a motion to move it forward, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Coggan, second by Mr. Turner, discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I use a term that you use here, clearing trees and debris. And that means all the trees on the property?
There's approximately 40 acres of trees that will remain, is that correct? 30 acres of trees that will remain undisturbed on the site.
At the last meeting, I, the presenter, stated that the, he pointed to an area on the chart that was considered wetlands. So is that the portion that he's referring to as wetland, that the trees will remain?
I'm not sure if you recall that.
There are about two acres, or acre and a half maybe, of wetlands. So it is included in that undisturbed area.
It is included in an undisturbed area?
It is, yes, sir.
Will that be left intact as is, or will there be some modification to the undisturbed area?
For this part of the project, it will be left undisturbed.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Okay. Any other discussion with F?
Did we just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Did we just have two contractors?
Yes, sir, that's what we had.
Okay, any other discussion with F?
One minor question. This is strictly for trees. This is not to start doing a foundation, any-
It's just site work, that's correct, yes, sir.
I just wanted to abbreviate it so I'm not disturbed. Thank you much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Okay, Dr. Barr, G?
Y'all are doing real good, I appreciate it. Item G, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy DO. This relates to strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and that is item G, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move G forward, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and second, any discussion? Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Dr. Barr, H?
In item H, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract with Tyler Technologies of Plano, Texas, for pupil transportation management software needed for the school system be renewed for an additional contract period. The effective date will be July 1, 2019, and the expiration date will be June 30, 2020. The total contract value is $96,346.72. School system will utilize a competitively bid contract managed by Sourcewell, a national purchasing cooperative, to purchase the software needed for the school system. This relates to strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding source is the FY-2020 general funds, function 2700, object 612.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second for H, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and second, any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Is there an increase in this, for this request, from last year? I cannot find any increase because we collapsed some of the items.
I do not remember hearing the word increase as it relates to this item, but I can go back and double-check that for you. I would have to-
If I'm correctly, this started off, this category started off three years ago with about $12,000.
Okay, I don't remember that, but I'd have to check it to be certain. But I don't, there are no new parts to the software, as I'm looking at it. Nothing's been added in quite some time. Those are the pieces that we've had probably now for 10 years or so.
Thank you much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five, zero. Aye.
In item A, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. Number one, K-12 Solutions Group, which is our student information system. The contract value is $178,868.92, with an effective date of July 1, 2019, and an expiration date of June 30, 2020. Number two, USHA Software, which is our funding analysis software. Contract value is $49,521.52. The effective date will be July 1, 2019, and the expiration date will be June 30, 2020. And finally, Top Leasing LLC for a facility for Rise Academy. The contract value is $84,000. The effective date will be August 1, 2019, and the expiration date will be July 31, 2020. And there is a description of each of those contracts in the information that you've been provided. I'm happy to highlight any of those. They're all, they're all continuations of existing items. They relate to goal areas one, student achievement and success, goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding sources are outlined there for your review also. And that is item A.
May I have a motion to move A forward, please?
So moved.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay, second, I'll take Ms. Coggan this time. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. J?
In item J, the superintendent, who's been very busy, recommends that the attached school resource officer services contract with the Newton County Board of Commissioners be approved. The total contract amount is $1,2570. The contract became effective on July 1, 2017, and the expiration date now will be June 30, 2020. The reimbursement rate has changed in this contract to reflect anticipated increases to be approved by the Newton County Board of Commissioners. The previous annual reimbursement rate was $945,205. This is to ensure that we have a continuous contract for SRO services. This relates to strategic goal areas one, student achievement and success, three, culture, climate, and communication, four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding source is FY-2020 general funds, function 2600, object 300. That concludes item J.
Okay, may I have a motion to move J forward, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Turner, second by Johnson, any discussion? The back door doesn't open up.
We're all alert.
Okay. Any discussion? Yeah, we're all on alert up here, I'm sorry. Don't open the back door.
So, there's the increase in just reimbursement rate, we're not adding any deputies or taking any deputies away?
No, sir, that's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, zero. Brown four, F 250, your lights are on. Dr. Barr, we're ready for the next one?
Item K, the superintendent recommends the approval of a contract with the Newton County Sheriff's Office for providing canine detection services in our school. This agreement will provide 180 full-day visits focused on middle and high schools at an annual cost of $93,655.17. The effective date of the contract would be July 1, 2019, with an expiration date of June 30, 2020. As you know, the safety and security of our students is a central focus of our district. Detection services are an important component of that goal and serve as a valuable deterrent. We currently have, as we just approved, an SRO contract in the high schools and middle schools, and this just extends that service to supplement those services using a canine school resource officer unit. A trained, certified law enforcement officer will accompany the dog throughout the inspections. This relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and three, culture, climate, and communication, and the funding source is the FY-2020 general funds, function 2600, object 300, and there's a copy of the memorandum of understanding there for your review. That concludes item K.
May I have a motion to move K four, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Turner, second by Johnson, discussion? I do have some discussion, but Mr. Bailey, it looks like you want to go first?
I'm gonna let you start.
Okay, I always try to let y'all go first. So, I have a couple of concerns regarding this, and I know I have expressed my concerns to you, Mrs. Fury. So some of my concerns, and Dr. Barr, you don't know the concerns, but just to take you out of the picture. But some of the concerns were the fact that the people we just did use, who have a pretty expensive cost, their canines were friendly canines, and I know this is, in the MOU, this is supposed to be a friendly canine, but they were able to do some things that canines in the past with the sheriff department have not been able to do, such as the medications, detecting those, and stuff. So I felt like I did not want to go back in terms of taking a chance of the unknown when we have something known. Another one of my concern was the fact that purchasing a canine, and even though it would be a shared cost, it depends on the handler how long the canine would last. And what I mean by that is that we would purchase the canine, and life is unpredictable, and let's say the canine passes away, bless his or her heart, three years down the line, then we're purchasing another canine. Whereas with the other company, we're not worried about purchasing canines over because we're paying for a service versus paying for a canine. So I didn't want it to look like a waste of funds. The other thing, too, is the handler, even though there's a MOU saying, again, it's supposed to be a friendly dog, we haven't had that in the past, and so my concern is, we don't get to choose the handler, so how do we know that this dog would be friendly? And it is a shared canine with the sheriff department, and they may want a little bit more aggressive dog than a friendly dog. So, just a couple of my concerns. And, again, too, looking at the numbers, just being able to see how effective the other company that we just used was compared to in the past with the sheriff department. So sometimes, when it comes to safety, even though it's a big difference in terms of cost, I have kids in the school system, and safety, I don't think is something you can put a price tag on when it comes to kids.
Right. And so just a couple of comments that I have, it is, you mentioned what can the dog detect, and it is illegal substances, that's what the dog will be able to detect. It is a shared use, so there's a shared risk associated with the life expectancy of the dog, because it is a partnership that we're entering into. And as you stated, the MOU does, and let me just mention that Captain Banks is in the audience, so if I misstate something, because, you know, I've had a few dogs as pets, but I've never had any that were trained to do anything really specific, so if he needs to step up, that's fine. But in the MOU, it calls for that kind of dog that we've grown accustomed to presently.
And I think also gunpowder, so firearms as well, the dog will be trained to identify Weapons.
We're working through gunpowder.
Okay.
That's an issue that we're working through.
I was going to say, he looked uncertain about that.
Right. Captain Banks said yes.
We got one yes and one uncertain.
Whatever Captain Banks says is the answer.
So, again, going to my unknowns.
I have a point of clarity, too, if I can ask?
Yes.
The recommendation here says for 180 full-day visits, and I've witnessed this firsthand, too, you're not going to get a full-day visit out of the dog, I know. It was, I don't even know if we got an hour out of it before you have to rest, and then, you know, it was just-
Where's the rest can be here? There goes that life expectancy.
And one of the points, too, of the searches, I think, are for deterrents, certainly, but once the dog shows up, everyone quickly finds out the dog's on the property, so if he searches for 15 minutes and then has to rest, and, you know, the opportunity to get rid of anything that the dog might find is available. But that's, the point of clarity I'm asking for is the 180 full-day visits, are you saying we would have a dog and handler 100 every day of this- Are you saying we would have a dog and handler a hundred and eight, every day of the, the school year?
Right, that's, that's the agreement, that's right. And then the time that it was, and that's the part that we're paying for. And then the sheriff's office bears the expense of the other days that it's in use for their, for their own, um, for their use.
So we can have a dog on one of our campuses every day of the school year?
That is my, that is my understanding.
You have, you have the, the, the purchase agreement would have the service of the dog, not necessarily, um, searching a hundred and eighty days every single day, but the presence of the dog. So, for example, you might, um, you might think about, um, our elementary schools, for example. Um, certainly, I'm not, I don't want to bring a dog in to be, um, searching for illegal things in our elementary schools, but it's an opportunity to build relationships with our school resource officers and law enforcement much earlier than middle school. So while the resource officer will have the dog in an elementary school setting, it, it opens up the door for potential, um, relationship building, which is part of our SRO program in its entirety to, um, connect our resource officers to the, to our students and to community. Um, certainly, we, the dog is not going to, um, perform its duty eight hours a day, every day. Not unlike when, um, the other, um, the vendor, um, which is a little bit different, because the sheriff's department's not a vendor, they're a partner, and the other is a vendor until, you know, and, and we have no complaints about the service of the vendor, um, with the exception of the, the fact that we're enhancing a partnership. It gives us an opportunity to, to grow our partnership, and then to get a service, um, for one hundred and eighty days. So if we have a need to have, and, and the vision is that we would map out these visits so that they would show up on campuses throughout the system over the course of a hundred and eighty days, and then do some, you know, we've got CHAMP's program, so there's possibility that, that would be a great time for the canine to work with, um, the CHAMP's instructor to, to do demonstrations and things like that. So, um, I think it's, it's, it's an opportunity, whereas in the past, um, we've not had a canine, um, at least in the recent past, at our disposal. So when a situation would arise, we would call the sheriff's department, and then they would have to scramble to try to help us with the, with the canine. Now we have one. Um, we would, if this is approved by the board this evening, um, at, at, at our disposal to, to work in a partnership to determine how best to, to, to accomplish the goal for, for the school system, which is deterrence. So the frequency of visits equals deterrence, and that's what we're after. And...
So, another question?
Go ahead.
Um, just the, the MOU, is that for one year with the sheriff's department?
It's a one-year with renewables, I believe.
And then is the, so then this, uh, contract, uh, contract as well is for one year. What, what happens at the end of the year? Well, I guess it's not really a concern, but if we're gonna enter a partnership with the, with the county, um, which I love the idea of the partnership, what happens in a year if we decide to do something different? Are they gonna be stuck, I mean, stuck with the dog? So we...
Can I say something? I think just reading this, what it is, and maybe I'm wrong, but my understanding is, the Newton County Sheriff's Department's gonna have a dog regardless, or maybe a set of dogs, however they decide. And so we're just paying for their use of that dog, so, or those dogs. So, if the dog dies, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but if that happens, they're responsible for providing another dog. It's not us, it's, you know, we're, we're paying for their service for this, so...
Is that correct?
That's, I heard a yes from, I think it was Captain Banks' voice.
But it's a shared cost of the dog.
No, but I think that's what we're paying for the service. I think that's where we're getting, you know, we're not necessarily paying for the dog. I mean, they may have one, or they may have five in the fleet. We're paying for the additional service, and they're just showing us how that money goes to break down, to pay for the SRO, the upkeep, and that sort of thing. But we may not have the same dog on site every day, so to speak. I mean, if something were to happen to the one that they use, that, it's just like we're paying for a service from a vendor, like we currently are.
With that being said, on the dog, and I apologize, Mr. Bailey, I'll let you finish your, your question.
That was it, that was good.
With that being said, um, and let's say the purchase of the dogs, and something happens to that dog, in, that dog, in the midst of the contract, the other dogs that they have, what if, because on this MOU, it's a certain type of dog, like a lab or something like that. So if that's not that certain type of dog, that the remainder of their dogs they have, let's say they have something a little bit more, uh, with a different type of temperament, then what happens?
Well, if I may, we can set the guidelines as to what type dog should be purchased, number one. Number two, I think we missing the fact that these relationships, the sheriff's department has a vested interest in this county, in our school system. And, they know the workings of the judicial system, they know what the DA expects for to develop a good case. So, I think we'll miss out on somebody else coming in who know nothing about our system. And, uh, and I think we...
So let me correct you, Mr. Turner, because I don't want my words to be misconstrued. I'm not knocking the partnership, I'm not knocking that at all. Everybody knows I'm all for partnerships. But what I am saying is that a child's life is different from a partnership. I respect partnerships wholeheartedly. However, but like I said, I don't think you can put a price on something if the other thing was working. We went to a vendor for a reason.
But, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to make is the fact that I know the process, what goes into purchasing dogs. So if we set the guidelines as to what type of dog we want, that type dog would be purchased. And there's different type dogs, you can get attack dogs, you can get, uh, dogs to search for different items. And if we set the guidelines, the sheriff's department, I'm sure, will accommodate us with our request. Uh, and also the cost, we as a board, we have a responsibility of making sure we spend taxpayers' money...
Again, going back to somebody's life.
Without jeopardizing the safety. And I think if we allow them to abide by the rules that we set up, and the type of dog we want, we won't jeopardize safety, but we also save money.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I, I, I'm, uh, excited about this recommendation from the superintendent. And I'm excited more that it's a German Shepherd, because I love that kind of dog. And I think it brings a message along with being friendly. Uh, these dogs are professional, just as our RSOs, they're professional dogs. And because you are lobster, that don't mean you are friendly. You know, you can have some nasty little small dogs that you hold, but I don't think it goes that way. There's nothing we are doing, in my view, that we are jeopardizing in any way, any student. I think bringing this dog aboard will help us ensure that the student get through school, uh, unattached, with a reputation of doing something wrong. He's our helper, so I'm very proud, and I appreciate this. I'm excited about this program and how it's set up and intended to fund.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. For the correction, though, it's not a German Shepherd, that's a different temperament. So that's the temperament we're trying to move one for.
Well, the temperament is that you're trying to quantify, uh, categorize a dog. And all dogs are dogs.
Are you saying they all bite?
At some point, they all might bite.
Some of them won't bite.
Any other discussion? I'm just saying we went to a vendor for a reason. Any other discussion?
Um, I got a quick question, and I don't know which one of you. Remind me how much the other vendor was, and for how many days it was, I know we did it for one semester, and it was...
So the proposed comparative analysis shows that the vendor would provide eighty point five days of visits, like when they would actually be per, per school year. And, um, the, the daily rate for each of those visits is eight hundred dollars, where, um, and that's, that, so I, I, we did an analysis, and I don't know, Mike, if you have the number, so I'm not telling any lies. So you make sure my numbers are accurate. But the, the first year with the sheriff's department, the expenditures are roughly five hundred and twenty dollars per, per day, compared to the eight hundred dollars. And then, if we were to continue our partnership year two, um, the vendor would be eight hundred dollars, and then, um, for eighty point five visits, and then, on the sheriff's side, on our side, it would be forty...
Two seventy-five.
Forty-two seventy-five, for a total daily rate of two hundred and...
Two hundred seventy-five dollars.
Two hundred seventy-five dollars, okay. So, um, but I did reach out to the vendor and ask for, um, the, a possible reduction in, um, price, and the vendor came back and said that with the two-year contract, they would reduce the daily rate from eight hundred dollars to seven hundred and sixty, so...
I guess, and, was my understanding is that when we decided to go with a vendor, which I've heard nothing but positive feedback, um, was because we didn't have, the sheriff's department did not have that, uh, a particular, did not have a, a program at the time for us to, to use. So hence, we needed to get somebody in there because they were having to borrow animals or dogs from other, uh, places. So that's why we wanted this, and now they are able to provide this service for us.
And those dogs were aggressive at times?
Okay, and, well, yes, and so now they're able to provide that service for us. Um, and that's why we're going to this, and is it at cheaper rate? And they have agreed to have a less aggressive dog?
Correct.
Is that my understanding?
Yes, that is correct.
So, I, I think, okay.
I, I, I'm not sure of the, of the breed, what, um, Captain Banks, was it a lab breed? Yes.
Yeah, I know with the, I sat through the vendor's, um, presentation at, I think it was the Creer Academy, and they used this one particular little dog, and it was great, but she was also explaining that they did have different dogs, different breeds, so, and one was a lab, so, um, anyway, that's it, I have no more questions or comments.
My last question then would be if, um, I can't see anything in the agreement, so help me if it's in there and I'm missing it. If, I know we, we went to a vendor for a reason, if this dog or this unit is unavailable, are we gonna still be on the hook for the payment, even if we can't use the dog? So we're, but I see monthly payments. So if the monthly payment's gonna be adjusted when we don't get to use the dog, then that, then we are gonna wind up saving money and have the dog more often. But if, let's say we're out three months and we can't use the dog, I just want to make sure we're not making payments.
And the MOU is contingent upon the service being provided, the payments are...
For a hundred and eighty days.
That's right, they're contingent upon the service being provided.
So if they, if they're, if they're only available a hundred and seventy-nine, we don't pay?
Uh, that's, that is correct.
Okay.
I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the contractual obligation.
That's the way I read it, so I was just making sure.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye, four one. Item L?
Item L, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. Uh, number one, commercial appliance parts and service, that is for maintenance and repair of kitchen equipment. The contract value is four hundred fifty thousand dollars. The effective date will be June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, with an expiration date of June twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. Gordon Food Service, for food for the school nutrition program, contract value four million dollars. The effective date will be June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, and the expiration date will be June twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. Uh, number three, Royal Food Service, for produce and eggs, contract value of seven hundred thousand dollars. The effective date will be June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, with an expiration date of June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. And number four, Southeastern Paper Group, for paper and cleaning products, for five hundred thousand dollars, with an effective date of June twenty-eight, eight nineteen, and an expiration date of June twenty-seven, twenty. And there are descriptions of each of those contracts provided for your review. And, the strategic goal area is for operational and organizational effectiveness, and the funding source is the FY two thousand twenty school nutrition program funds. And that is item L, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion to move L for, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion?
No question, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Does that increase across the board in, in this presentation from last year?
No, sir.
Same cost.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And I have a question. How many eggs is that gonna be, exactly?
Mr. Bailey is... It's my last item, Mr. Bailey.
But our attachment, and I know, you've got no idea, the dog will take some... Uh, our attachment was for Douglas County, uh, and not Newton County, so I don't know if that's, if we might have gotten the wrong attachment.
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
But we will, we, we will correct that.
Because I was looking to see how many eggs we could get.
That would be totally my fault, sorry, but we will get that corrected.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, five zero. M? Dr. Jordan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of a contract with the Georgia Center for Assessment to develop summative curriculum checks. The purchase amount is thirty-three thousand. After monitoring and reviewing formative assessment data and teachers' feedback, the elementary and secondary curriculum teams determine there is a need to reduce the number of formative assessments students take throughout the year. To reduce the number of assessments administered throughout the school year, the Georgia Center for Assessment at the University of Georgia will develop three curriculum checks for teachers using field-tested items aligned to the Georgia standards of excellence. Not only will this reduce the number of assessments administered, it will provide more instructional time for teachers to assist students with mastering standards. This relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. The funding source, FY two thousand nineteen general funds, function twenty-one hundred, object two-six-zero.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Jordan. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion?
One question, please. Can you tell us what was removed, or going to be removed, or reduced as a result of this program?
Yes, um, we had administered formative assessments, and there were quite a few that were administered, um, according to the curriculum maps, and that became somewhat cumbersome. And we wanted to ensure that we reduced those number of assessments for students and not expose them to too much testing, and therefore contribute to testing fatigue, so that, we thought that this would be the best way to go.
Well, I'm not questioning your direction. I'm trying to get an assessment of the reduction in assessment.
I would have to get a definite number for you, Mr. Johnson, I do not have that with me right now.
Well, if you can, but, I just, it sounds good, and I get excited when I hear that you're reducing something.
Okay.
And you're going to replace it with something new. That's news to me, so I just want to make sure I'm on board with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Just curious how it works. So the, the, um, curriculum checks are done then by the Georgia Center for Assessments? So they checking our curriculum maps and making sure we are, we're teaching the right things, rather than us assessing the kids with extra tests? Is that right?
That is correct. We do share our curriculum maps with them, this is a partnership. We share the curriculum maps, review the standards together, they develop the test blueprints for these assessments, then we have the opportunity to refine those as we need to, and we approve them, and then they develop the items associated with those standards at various points in the year.
Okay, so we're getting it for a service.
Yes, and we are co-owners of the items.
Once they're created, we...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for M? Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five zero, thank you, Dr. Jordan. Ms. Ramsey, Mrs. Ramsey, you have N through Q.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, item N, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreements between the Newton County School System and individuals to provide physical therapy and occupational therapy services to students with disabilities in accordance to their individualized education programs, or IEPs. The school system is required to provide physical therapy and occupational therapy for students whose IEP recommends these services. We provide these services through contractual arrangements with two physical therapists, seven occupational therapists, and one certified occupational therapist assistant. Therapists work eight-hour days and are, and are on payroll status with employee benefits. Hourly rates for occupational therapists and physical therapists are based on years of experience with the Newton County School System and level of degree obtained. It relates to the strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source is FY two thousand twenty federal IDEA flow-through funds. And that concludes letter N.
Okay, may I have a motion for N, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion for N? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, O.
Item O, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreements between the Newton County School System and the identified organizations to provide speech services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, vision services, deaf, hard-of-hearing services, and nursing to students with disabilities in accordance to their IEPs for the nineteen-twenty school year. The district is responsible for obtaining, providing, or arranging for the provision of special education services as determined by the student's IEP. Newton County provides these services through contractual arrangements with outside agencies when the need for services for students with disabilities cannot be met through school system employees. Hourly rates for contracted services are based on years of experience... Hourly rates for contracted services are based on years of experience and level of degree obtained. NCSS is currently contracting with agencies to provide services for speech language therapy and other related services as required by students' IEPs. The contractual arrangements with AMN Healthcare Incorporated, Aviana Healthcare, Laser Works Dynamic Therapy Solutions, Lynda Cannon Practical Therapy Solutions, Staff Rehab, Stepping Stones Group Therapy of Staffing, Wing Guard Therapy Associates, and Order Health Services are attached. The strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, will be supported, and the funding source will be FY 2020 General and Special Education Funds, function 1000, object 260. That concludes item O.
Thank you, ma'am, is there a motion for O, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, P.
Item P, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached arrangements between Newton County School System and Catherine Stubbs and Terry Justice for services to students with disabilities in accordance with their IEPs for the 1920 school year. The school system is required to administer developmental assessments for preschool students referred for evaluation through Childfind. Through the agreement, Ms. Terry Justice would also assist special education teachers within NCSS regarding testing procedures and developmental evaluations. The agreement of 19.5 hours per week plus travel expenses is attached. In an effort to support IEP compliance, Ms. Catherine Stubbs will perform reviews to include student records and files, to review processes and procedures in place to identify areas that are having a negative impact on meeting Georgia DOE timelines and student achievement. This supports strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source will be FY 2020 Special Education Funds. And that concludes item P.
Thank you, is there a motion for P?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I'll take Coggan for second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, Q.
Last one, item Q, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached service agreement between the Newton County School System and Medical Provider Services Incorporated for Medicaid billing and administrative outreach services. The school system continues to process Medicaid billing for students in special education who receive speech language therapy. Medical Provider Services Incorporated provides assistance with the actual enrollment of new Medicaid eligible students, billing for services, and informing the school system of programs and activities that are potentially reimbursable. MPS will perform data processing, billing, treatment plan processing, reimbursement collections, and maintain records for NCSS. The fee for service is 12% of all net payments received from Medicaid as a result of MPS's efforts. Recommendation is for the approval of the attached service agreement to extend all terms and conditions of the service agreement for one-year period beginning July 1, 2019 until June 30, 2020. This supports strategic area goal number one, student achievement and success. The funding source will be FY 2020 Federal IDEA Funds.
Motion for Q.
Item Q.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Turner, second by Ms. Coggan, any discussion?
Just, is the 12% the same as last year?
Yes.
Okay, that was.
Still the same thing.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you so much. Dr. Thomas, you have R through U.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Item R, the superintendent recommends the annual renewal contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. Item one, Microsoft Corporation, which is the Microsoft licenses, is an estimated contract value of $145,289.42. Item two, Follett School Solutions Incorporated, which includes a library and asset management software, the total cost is $30,077.58. The effective date will be August 31st, 2019, the expiration date will be August 31st, 2020. Item number three, Safari Montage, this is the digital media platform and the products. The total cost is $35,521.20. The effective date will be October 13th, 2019, and the expiration date is October 12th, 2020. Item four, Fornet Security Incorporated, this is the internet content filter software. The total cost is $82,000, the effective date will be August 1st, 2019, and the expiration date will be August 1st, 2020. A rationale, just a little bit about each of these items, with Microsoft Corporation, the state of Georgia contract encompasses multiple categories of software. This contract provides access to lower overall pricing of Microsoft licenses than solicitation and other contracts have been utilized in the past. Therefore, it's determined to be in the best interest of the school system to purchase the needed licenses from Dell Marketing LP, utilizing their aforementioned statewide contract. As it relates to Follett School Solutions, Follett is the largest provider of library, asset, and textbook automated management solutions for K-12 schools. Approximately two-thirds of all public schools in the country use one or more of the Follett's automated solutions. For item Safari Montage, Safari Montage is a comprehensive suite of products designed to fulfill the digital media distribution and visual instructional needs of K-12 school systems. The solution provides teachers and students access to thousands of segments and searchable videos, still images, web links, audio files, and other documents. And as it relates to Fornet Security, iBoss Cyber Security provides an education-focused content filtering solution that provides scalable, customizable protection for all devices that access the network. All of these items support strategic goal area one, which is student achievement and success, as well as strategic goal item number four, organizational and operational effectiveness. These items, if approved, are slated to be purchased from FY 20 General Funds, and this concludes item R.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas, may I have a motion for R, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, discussion? Having none, all in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, S.
Item S, the superintendent recommends the interactive panels needed for the school system be purchased from Howard Technology Solutions of Ellisville, Mississippi. The total cost is $127,675. The rationale, the technology department is systematically identifying older smart boards in classrooms that are inoperable or at the end of their lifespan. The equipment is being replaced with new interactive panels. The purchase includes interactive panels and all accessories, all associated peripherals, cabling, hardware, as well as installation and cleanup. The school system will utilize a contract managed by the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, a national purchasing cooperative, to procure the equipment. The equipment and their associated costs are provided for you in the table, and these costs are aligned to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. It's slated to be purchased out of FY 20 Capital Funds, and this concludes item S.
Okay, may I have a motion for S, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, any discussion or questions? I do have one question, Dr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, the equipment that's not operable, like when a teacher reports that their smart board is not working, do you know like the average turnaround time for that to be replaced or fixed?
I do not know, but I have a lifeline here.
Okay.
So I believe you're related, the question is related to when a teacher submits a now ticket, what's the average turnaround time?
We average a two-day turnaround on those problems, on those issues.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, okay, Dr. Thomas, next one.
Item T, the superintendent recommends the computers and associated peripherals needed for the technology department and the Career Technical and Agricultural Education Program be purchased from the Dell Corporation of Rock, of Round Rock, Texas, and Bitespeed LLC of Morehead, Minnesota. The total cost is $1,382,981.93. The rationale, a summary of the recommended technology purchases for the aforementioned departments and programs is reflected in the table below, and so you have the table that's been provided to you. These purchases are aligned with goal area, strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and it is slated to be funded with FY 20 Capital Funds as well as CTAE Funds. This concludes item T.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion for T, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved in second, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, last one, you.
Okay, item U, the superintendent recommends the educational video resources needed for the school system be purchased from Brain Pop of New York, New York. The total cost is $28,118. Rationale, individual schools are allowed the flexibility to use their allotted Title I funds in a way that supports and aligns with strategies identified in their Title I school-wide plan. Accordingly, select schools have chosen to invest in Brain Pop educational video software. The videos includes links for teachers that includes lesson plans, printouts, and other instructional materials. This is a single-source, single-sold-source purchase. This purchase is aligned to goal area, strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and it is slated to be funded out of FY 20 Title I Part A school allocations. And this concludes item U.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion, move U forward, please?
So moved, second.
Okay, moved in second, second I'll take for Bailey, any discussion? Having none, all in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, thank you, Dr. Thomas, Ms. Sanders, V.
I love Brain Pop. It's fun for me, please, learn with.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends approval of personnel items as outlined in executive session.
Okay, may I have a motion for V?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second on V, any discussion? Having none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, thank you, Ms. Sanders. Other matters of interest, I do have one before you go.
Sure.
Actually, I have two, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, the people transportation management software. So it was '92, one of the board members looked it up, '92 last year, '96 this year.
Well, that's what I was asking about, what's the difference, what'd he be doing?
He just, cost went up.
As in, as in everything.
Well, you see, he disappeared.
No, he's right.
I don't know the answer, but I.
Okay, I appreciate your honesty.
We'll get it for you. And as it relates to the Douglas County egg item, they're the lead agency in that purchasing cooperative, so that is the correct document.
So Douglas County, we're in the group with Douglas County and other counties?
That's right.
Thank you. The other item I have is, I only have one action beyond this meeting, and that's Dr. Jordan, for you to email Mr. Johnson the definite number of assessments, did Dr. Jordan come?
I have it written down, too.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, other matters of interest?
Do you want everybody to go first, or you want me to go?
You can go ahead and go.
Okay. With tonight's board approval of my recommendations in executive session, I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Ms. Leah Green as the new principal of West Newton Elementary School, and Dr. Ashanti Everett as the incoming principal of the Newton County Theme School. Both ladies are present in the, in the room this evening. Ms. Green is currently serving as an assistant principal at West Newton Elementary School, and Dr. Everett is the Newton County School System's current secondary coordinator for curriculum and instruction and professional learning. They both will report to their new positions at the start of the 1920 school year. We conducted several interviews for each of our two principals vacancies, including numerous internal candidates who already work in our schools. Ultimately, both of our selections happen to already be members of our Newton County School System family, which is exciting because we are working hard to promote from within and recognize the talents and services of the members of our existing team. Ms. Leah Green earned her Bachelor's of Art in Arts and Psychology from Clark Atlanta University in Atlanta, and her Master's in Education and Curriculum and Instruction from Oakland University in Rochester, Michigan. She added an educational specialist degree in administration and supervision in August of 2003 from Lincoln Memorial University in Harrigate, Tennessee. Ms. Green began her career in education with the Gwinnett County School System as a teacher at Norcross Elementary School, where she was a finalist for Teacher of the Year for three consecutive years. She joined the Newton County School System in 2005 as the instructional coach and Title I coordinator at Rocky Plains Elementary School. She soon made the transition to school-level leadership and has served in the capacity of assistant principal at East Newton Elementary School and later West Newton Elementary School, where she is now. During her time as an assistant principal, Ms. Green has performed numerous duties, including testing coordinator, Title I coordinator, RTI coordinator, special education, and ELL administrator, our Georgia pre-K site coordinator. She is a member of several professional organizations, including the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders, the Professional Association of Georgia Educators, the National Educators Association. I really believe that the fact that Ms. Green is already a trusted member of the West Newton staff and school family, that we will experience a very smooth transition as she assumes the role of school principal, replacing Mr. Sammy Fudge, who is departing as he's accepted a position out of state. So congratulations to Ms. Green, we're very proud. Dr. Ashanti Everett earned a Bachelor of Arts in Dance from the University of Kansas in 1999, and a Master's of Science in Education from Pittsburgh State University in Kansas in 2003. She later added on a specialist degree in educational leadership from Georgia College and State University in Millidgeville, and ultimately obtained a Doctor of Education in Educational Leadership and Management from Capella University in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Dr. Everett began her career in education in 2001 as a middle grades fine arts dance instructor in Kansas City, Missouri, before transitioning to teaching all general subjects in grades three through five for Kansas City Unified School District. Upon moving to Georgia, Dr. Everett served as the High Achievers Coordinator for Mount Zion Christian Academy in Jonesboro, Georgia in 2006. She joined the Newton County School System team in 2009, where she was hired to serve as an eighth-grade language arts and social science teacher at Liberty Middle School. During her tenure at Liberty Middle School, she was named the Liberty Middle School Teacher of the Year and also won the 2011 Outstanding Woman in Education Award. Dr. Everett transitioned to the district office to serve as a secondary instructional coach for English Language Arts, History, and Social Studies from 2012 to 2015, before moving into school leadership as an assistant principal at the Newton County Theme School, and then Clements Middle School. During her time as assistant principal, Dr. Everett has amassed valuable experience overseeing curriculum, assessment, instruction, athletics, RTI, and discipline. She moved back to the district office to assume her current position as the coordinator of secondary curriculum and professional learning. The fact that Dr. Everett is, is and was a well-respected and regarded member of our Newton County Theme School family just a few short years ago will help ensure a smooth transition as she replaces Dr. Naomi Cobb, who is transitioning to serve the school systems in our region at the Griffin Risa. I am extremely confident in both Ms. Green and Dr. Everett, and would like to congratulate Dr. Everett, we're very proud of your contribution. I'm sure that the knowledge, their knowledge, care, and commitment will lead to the continued student and staff success at both of their respective schools. Congratulations, and July 1st will be here before you know it. So thank you very much for being here this evening. With that being said, that concludes our, my additional other matters of interest.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to you both, any other matters of interest?
I do not have any, no.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go back into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Thank you, there is a motion on the floor, may I have a second, please?
Second.
To discuss the superintendent's evaluation in executive session? There's a second on the floor. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We will adjourn to executive session for the superintendent's evaluation.
I tell you, Robert must have had some awful meetings to have to come up with his rules.
Baker got the record. I make a motion that we are.
I don't know where it, I don't know.
Thank you.
Baker, you got the record.
Now, blue is on.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Immediate adjourn, nine oh four.
Nine oh four.
Nine oh four.
You got the record again.
There it is.
Y'all keep putting. Yes, you have, too.
You got two records.
My birthday, my birthday.
Hey, you got two records now.
Let me tell you, I always put y'all in presentation.
I, what did I think it was? For the segment.